This conference will now be recorded.
All right, ready?
All right, we're gonna call the December ninth Nurylton City Council meeting to order. All is present for council.
Look at the legends to the leg of the United States of America and two republics which stands one nation under God invisible liberty and justice for all.
Anybody have any changes to the agenda? No?
Motion to approve the agendas.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda items?
I move to approve consent agenda items.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, does anybody have anything for public comment at the moment? Otherwise, we'll move on. All right, so it looks like Robert Coonrod?
Not here.
Not here? Okay. Go to truth and taxation presentation?
All right, so this is the truth and taxation part of the hearing, so basically we'll go through a quick overview of the 2025 budget and then the council will open it up for a hearing. So the purpose of this hearing is to enhance participation in the property tax system, to educate property owners, residents, businesses, and other interested community members on how property taxes are determined, to encourage transparency in the annual budget process, to create an opportunity for property owners, residents, businesses, and other interested community members to engage with the city council on the proposed budget and levy. This is a comparison between 2024 and 2025. So the general fund is going up a little bit, the capital fund is going down, fire relief remains the same, our bond payment remains the same, the adjusted tax levy difference from 2024 is $51,413 or an increase of 7.88%. So this is where the 2025 budget is being spent via department, obviously, the majority of the budget is wages at the city or at the public sector administration, police, ambulance, fire, fire is mostly equipment and mostly equipment. Maintenance is mostly streets, wages, garbage contract. Nursing home is a large part of that as well, but that gets reimbursed on the revenue side of things, so that's basically a wash. Just to note, the utility bills are paid by separate enterprise funds, so that is not part of the budget. Those enterprise budgets separately paid for by their own enterprise funds, that's not out of the budget. Budget decreases this year, basically inflation, consumer price index, inflation has risen dramatically over the last year, so it's simply costing us more money to provide services to our residents. Compensation study, the council did do a compensation study, wage study in 2024, so that's an increase. Increases in fees associated with departments, there's a few increases of fees associated with some of our departments as far as accessing state and federal partners, websites and fees that we are, just have no, we have to access those services and have no options to not access those services. And then obviously continuing repairs with aging infrastructure. These are just some of the, some of the changes that were made, obviously, there's no election next year, so there's a $4,000 decrease to that. We made some changes to the mayor's infrastructure, so that went down. We have no change to the debt levy, and then you can see where those increases came from on the department increases. The council also chose to use some spending down from the, from the overage that we had last year in lieu of raising some of the taxes. Capital funding that's being set aside this year, we have to replace radios onto the new system that's coming up for the 800 megahertz system for both the fire department and police department, so that's being set aside. Street repairs and seal coating, rig replacement for the fire department, Legion field repairs, ambulance rig and replacements, so the capital funding being set aside for this year is $117,150. And that's what I have for presentation. You can go ahead and open your public hearing.
We'll open the public hearing 6:35. Let's move on to the next.
If anybody doesn't want to move, if they hear, they can move on to the next department report.
Does anybody want to speak on that at this point, otherwise we'll move on for right now?
I have a question on the, on the budget. Under police, the social security, you only have $400, it should be about $12,000, goes up here.
You, you guys at the last meeting chose to migrate to the full-time, so there's, full-time police does not pay into social security.
Really? I thought everybody paid it.
No.
I did not know that.
Full-time police does not pay.
Well, I would tell me.
It's a good question.
No, full-time police does not pay into social security.
I thought they paid it, I thought all government employees paid into both.
No, no, full-time police does not pay social security.
Shit.
It was in a separate retirement.
I understand that, now. That, and again, my ambulance revenue just kind of just raises a big red flag for me. And that nursing home being offset, we only pay $6,700 a month for that, what is it, ECBN or whatever it's called? That's not going up any, is it?
That goes up and down based on whatever the state pays, so whatever, whatever comes in goes out the same amount, so, yeah.
Seems kind of stupid.
I, I don't disagree with you, but that's the only way that it can be accounted for.
Right, we can, if we don't pay it, then they'll shut us down, right?
Yeah.
That's also based on pay.
They should be paying us.
Yeah, it's based directly on the benefit of the year.
Okay. I didn't know about that source.
Yeah, so basically, we, we pay it under, from an invoice they send us.
That's all I had.
Sorry.
Yep, you're fine. All right. So we're doing resolutions?
You can skip over both of those.
Both of them, right? All right, ambulance department?
I don't believe Seas is here, so. You can go ahead and read the report.
Looks like Jennifer is still on a medical leave. We had participated in the pancake breakfast to raise money for her breast cancer, no new crew, and some are still working on getting signed off as students. Sarah Dawn, Jaden and Laura are all due for refreshers in March, would like to get approval so we can all work on getting it done. Do you need a motion for that?
Um, since it's not till March, I think we can wait until January.
We don't have a dollar, mom.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'd prefer to have.
Okay, so as director, with the end of the year coming, I'm working on getting close to the date on training they need, I also, I'm also working on what we will be doing for training throughout the upcoming year. As far as money coming from the state, we should be hearing on that sometime this month. Once we have an idea of what we're getting, I will look into options for what we need to purchase to keep our equipment up to date. Otherwise, have a great holiday season and look forward to seeing everyone in 2025. That's Sarah.
Move to accept the ambulance report.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fire department?
I believe Mike Scherf.
I'll start first. Normally, we donate money, it's not really a big deal, it just sure kind of is, so. Yep. As you know, the cost of equipment to keep the fire department is not cheap, that ten grand a year doesn't even get, probably buy a fire hose. For recognition of that fact, for over 30 years, the fire department relief association has been donating funds to the city of Nurylton from our charitable gambling activities. We've also donated to others, other, other local groups, most notably the school and some of the library. Every fire apparatus that we now have has been purchased in part with our donations. Much of our equipment is purchased outright with this funding, including the last $123,000 for our air packs and air bottles, not to mention the grain rescue trailer and much of its contents, as well as F2 across the street was purchased totally with those funds. And since 2017, the relief association has donated $550,000, which includes tonight's check that we are donated, donating for $100,000.
Wow.
Wow.
Please accept this donation from your firefighters.
Thank you.
We should have the mayor and maybe the.
I agree, you should.
Fire department on this as well?
Get the mayor up there.
You got it, Tom?
No. You go ahead.
Jam that.
You go, you're on the fire department.
Yeah, you're on the fire.
Keep a, keep a Pepsi?
Smile.
No Coke.
One, two.
Thank you very much, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
With that being said, on fire department, a few things we're looking for are washer, junk back there. After every fire, you need to wash your gear, if you don't wash your gear, chemicals and everything, you're able to burn, you don't stay in your clothes, and it's been proven to cause a lot of cancers and everything, so. With that being said, we had Adam Wackles looking up, what we really need is a gear extractor, it's a special washer made for fire departments, and it's P A standards, everything says you need to have this washing. We have it coming out of our general fund, we look for permission to buy that, I think it was like $7,500 to be approved to buy that.
You're, you're talking about your gambling fund or your?
No, our general fund.
Like your check?
Yeah, Corbin's check.
Okay, so that's not coming out of?
Any of our.
Our city funds, that's coming out of their funds.
Okay, they're just asking for permission to do that, right?
Then here's a big one we're gonna do is, we're also looking at buying a new brush truck. With all the medical stuff that we have in our truck now, we don't have room for anybody to be in the truck and all of our medical supplies. So what we're looking to do is buy a new brush truck, take the brush truck that we have now, make that into a more rescue rig, that would be over an F2 behind the trailer, so when we have a grain bin or a ice rescue or something, that truck's there, ready to get hooked up to our trailer and go, instead of coming over here, getting this and driving across, you know, and then hooking back up to the trailer where this is all hooked up, ready to go, but to get a brush truck, we're looking at $200,000. That would come out of our donated funds to the city as well. We're looking at maybe even doing a pumper, a new pumper or something someday, but you're looking at a million dollars for your pumper. Our pumper is not really outdated, everything that we have works great in it, so we felt this would best fit our company or our department. A lot of our stuff is, you know, green fires and medicals and a lot of that stuff.
I think, um, what are we sitting on that, like around $319,000, is that right?
I think that's what we had, yep.
I think we're sitting right around $319,000 of capital for the fire department.
I thought it was donation. Right. That's what you gave me, they did. Oh, no, yeah.
Yep, should be.
Yeah, it was like $217,000 and then with that hundred.
Yeah, $319,000, $319,000 is about where we're sitting at, capital funds for.
In there, check.
For capital for the fire department, that's earmarked for the fire department.
Okay.
So.
You want to take about two-thirds of that then for that new brush truck?
That would, is that what we're?
Got to get bids.
We got to take.
Well, and start looking, I guess tonight, what I, what I would look for would be for the council to, to say, yes, we'd like them to start looking and getting bids, or you're looking, or you're, you would like to see that process started. Not to necessarily approve the purchase of the truck, but to say, yep, we're good with you looking.
So that's got to go up to like three?
We'll, we'll, what'll basically have to happen is, more than likely, they'll have to start looking, kind of try to find a truck that they kind of sort of like, and then they'll get a bid spec, and then we'll have to publish those bids in a paper, and then any company that wants to bid on that truck will have to submit bids to the city. They will have to look at that, that bid and then choose to decide to go with whatever, you know, they have to have, so. It's gonna be, it's not gonna be like a overnight process, it's gonna be a very significant process.
And we talked to Dave from Hyman Fire and he said, if you bought that today, it'd be a year.
Till you get it?
Till you get it, yeah. So it's, it's not an overnight process by any means, it takes a little.
Give him a question?
No.
Oh, room, oh, yeah, there's, yeah.
The room, that's what we were gonna do is just back over there, we have plenty of room, we're gonna back the trailer up a little bit, then we, then the trailer, then the truck will be, the brush truck that we have now, 5550, will be backed right up to the hitch, so all we gotta do is drop that hitch and then ready to go, if we have need for the trailer, but other than that, it'll be unhooked so we can just take the medicals.
And then that new truck will sit.
Sit over here, that's what we were, we were talking about, put the new truck over there, but then you got guys getting geared here, running across the street, that isn't gonna work either, so. Keep all the fire apparatuses over here, keep some rescue stuff over there.
Ultimately, it's cutting down time to get out to where you need to.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, so you need a motion?
Yeah, I guess if you do it in a, in a single motion, would be to allow them to purchase the washing machine and to look into purchasing the brush truck or look into, look in to get specs for a new brush truck.
I'll make a motion to start the process for the specs on the truck and the cost of getting a new washer for gear.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And then you can go ahead and resolution, resolution 24-27 would be, uh, resolution adopting, or resolution accepting a donation.
Okay.
And that is this right there.
Just need to read that.
Yeah.
All right, so resolution 24-27 is accept, resolution accepting donations, whereas the city of Nurylton in Minnesota is generally authorized to accept donations of real and personal property pursuant in Minnesota State Statute 465.03 for the benefit of its citizens and is specifically authorized to accept gifts in, for the benefits of the city of Nurylton and its citizens pursuant to Minnesota Statue 471.17. And whereas the following persons and entities have offered to contribute the cash amount set forth below to the city is the city of Nurylton Fire Department for the $100,000. All such donations have been contributed, does anyone sign this?
It just says that the donations will be used for fire department capital purchase of equipment.
Oh, yes, I missed that part.
So I mean.
Move to adopt resolution 24-27.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the rest of the report is two medical calls.
Why is the Minnesota fire, fire training consistent?
Is that?
Minnesota fire training consistent?
The training last month.
Oh, the train that we did last month, well, what we did last month, we got Saks, Jack Mills from Saks, they came out, we did confined space training out at cardio, say somebody went down like their boot pit and.
Last, last month, when we had them, the presentation over there.
Oh, that one.
Is what is on there.
I copied, sorry about that. What that is, is it's mandatory class you gotta take in Minnesota to be a fireman, more like, kind of like a GEICO for firemen, so if somebody gets hurt or sick, they come in, they kind of step in and they have to pay your bill, if you get cancer, they really help you out, pretty, pretty cool course.
The thought they put on and bring into you guys.
Yeah, yeah, it's live, you know, some of the stuff we see, there's resources out there for firemen and people, some of the stuff we see that.
Right.
You have problems. Yep.
Mental and physical.
Yeah.
Kind of aspects.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the fire department report.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Police department?
We had 126 calls for service for the month of November, making our 2024, 2006 calls versus 100, or 1,121 from last year. It's been quite the last couple months, we've had two or three really big investigations happening, some cyber crimes, assaults and other things, so we've been working really hard recently. Scroll down. We had annual TASER, implement weather, and low light firearms qualification, we do those every year to maintain our licensing for the year. I would like approval to move Officer Jan from part-time to full-time as you guys approved that at the last meeting. This would not only be a time saver, but it would also be a money saver because hiring, hire, trying to find another officer and training them in would be like $15 to $2,000. So, asking for approval to move him from part-time to full-time, and then tires and actuator were replaced for $270, so that is all I have.
And the beginning date of the transfer, January 10th is on the memo.
Yeah, you want to close out the budget here first and adopt that resolution before you do that?
Probably should, okay. All right, so we're gonna close out the resolution adopting the 2025 general fund, is that a catch?
Yeah, you need to make motion to close your budget here first, if I have a desk, if anybody else wants to be heard first.
Anybody else want to be heard for the tax? If not?
I move to close the 2025 budget here.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
You can adopt, adopt resolution 24-26.
All right. Sorry, what?
You can adopt resolution 24-26.
Okay, so 24-26, resolution adopting of the 2025 general fund?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we can go back to the?
Yep, so if you choose to do that, it would be effective January 10th, 2025, grade five, step one.
Did see that in there.
It's in the memo.
Yeah, it's in the memo.
I have a question, are you saying that the cost of bringing someone else on, as if you were to open up this full-time position for other applicants would cost $2,000, $1,500? So instead of opening up to anyone, it would be, that would be the cost?
You'd have to go back and background, everybody all over again, go through the whole medical, the whole cycle, the whole background process, yeah.
Same way with purchasing also gear for them as well on top of it, so that's even more, that's not including equipment.
Best, like, your culture best uniforms.
Uniforms.
All that stuff, yeah.
Wouldn't we be doing that anyway when we have to replace our part-time person?
We wouldn't need replacing a part-time person, we already have.
We already have a part-time. Oh, there's already another part-time, okay, sorry.
Yeah.
I move to move Officer Jan from part-time to full-time.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else to these?
No, that's all, thank you.
Motion to approve the police department report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Care center report?
I don't think Bob can make it tonight, so that's in writing. He has some other stuff going on.
Okay.
I don't think there was anything too crazy.
No, census looks like 34.9, current is 34.
Oh, that happens.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, looks like they have Christmas coming up on December 9th, they're starting the Christmas, all days of Christmas, December 9th, Christmas party on the 20th.
Yeah. It's about that age of person?
I move to accept the care center report.
All in favor?
Aye.
People's Service report, so.
Okay, I don't have a whole lot, just getting ready for winter out there.
Yeah.
Few issues, but got a man with a car. The only thing I didn't put on here was about the transformer, me and Tony talked about it too.
Yeah.
It's, it's so far over now that it's gonna go, the whole transformer.
Where's the transformer at?
Right by my building.
There's, yeah, there's right, the concrete is starting to slop underneath the transformer, so you gotta figure that out, we need to.
I've lost like two, probably at least two, three inches with all the concrete out front, so it's, everything's just going to the north.
We're gonna have to work with Excel somehow and figure out, we need to try to shore that up first, or?
Yeah, I don't know how they would do that, I mean, we really don't want to do it if it's winter and.
No, it's gonna, it's gonna have to wait until it's spring.
Yeah.
Is it safe to wait till that?
Yeah.
Or we, it's not gonna tip.
No, it's not, it's not, it's not as bad as she made it sound like.
It is bad, it is bad.
It needs to be addressed in this, it needs to be addressed.
In the last two years, it has.
It's gone, it's, it's, it's gotten bad enough that from the, and I don't go out there very often, but from the time that I went out there, the last decade of time that I went out there, this, just week or so overall, I notice the difference.
Okay.
Is it just gonna tip over, or is it going?
No, if, if we waited four or five, six years, it would eventually tap over, but.
And then just lay on the ground, is that where?
Well, I'm sure the wires would hold it.
It'll, it'll go over the, the little ledge there.
But it just, it needs to, I'm guessing, I'm guessing it either needs to be repaired or someone needs to put some, some metal bracing there or something to hold it in place, we just, we just need to figure.
South cyber building, is that right?
North side, northeast side.
Yeah.
Yeah, right when you come in, right by the park.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah. Isn't that something that XL just takes care of?
Well.
Well, he said we have to do it together, they ain't gonna fix the whole thing, we'd have to do the concrete or shoring or anything like that, they would handle the electric portion of it, but it's kind of in a bad spot, but that's where it's at. So yeah, that, that is one thing that I did, I brought to them there. And then the chain link fence still out there from the flooding last year, it's unraveling now on the south side, so we're gonna have to do something with it. I mean, the field is not helping, the dirt is, you know, this far up it, so I don't know how to even attempt to fix that, all the dirt is pushed, so I don't, I don't know what to do with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's connect with the air.
Yeah, I have to take it out or something, I don't know.
Do we own that part right there on the?
We own a little bit around the outside.
But not right at the fence?
Yeah, I don't know how much of it on the outside that you guys own, but it's.
Nice to have a survey.
Yeah, I mean, they dig right next to the fence, which leaves no room for any mowing whatsoever around that fence, and you've got to have something on the other side of our fence.
I know, but just, he's not giving us any leeway there. You ask Cory tomorrow.
But if they can survey, do we have something to?
We don't like to do.
We'll have some stuff doing our surveys.
Yeah, I know, I saw that on my camera.
Yeah, could be, and I would ask about all sides of it, because that, that west side's just as bad.
Okay, we'll ask Cory tomorrow, because.
Yeah, see what he says about that.
In the projects.
Wouldn't be a bad idea to find out while they're here, not to pay an extra fee.
Right.
Yeah, because we can't even mow, it's, I can't, they can barely get down there too.
The corn will flip it on the wood.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, we'll, we'll talk to Cory.
Yeah, that sounds good, thanks, I appreciate that. Otherwise, everything's, I don't know.
We did run into a little problem with the pump you guys authorized at the last meeting.
Yeah, yes.
So apparently, saving money is not always what it's all cracked up to be.
Right, well, it's hard too, because you've always had.
Yeah, so the company that does all of our inspections won't touch that pump.
Why is that?
Not their pump.
They want us to get from them?
So we'd have to separate company do the inspections on the pump, because they won't touch that.
And you have seven, or you have eight pumps?
We have eight, so we'd have, we'd have seven pumps inspected and have a separate company come and inspect just that.
So it's gonna cost you more money than what it would cost to just have your normal people.
So the other bid that we had, was that the company that would come and inspect it? And how much difference was that?
It was like $2,000.
Yeah, but you would pay that in.
So I'm trying to, so I sent her an email trying to get them to match the price of the other pump.
Right.
But I haven't heard back yet.
I think you're gonna hear on Wednesday.
Okay.
Going forward, why can't we just have that company do them all and get rid of the pump so that?
Well, we could, but we'd have to wait and slowly pick, slowly transition over to cranes or everything, but then by that time, then we'd probably just slowly transition back.
Back.
So, I think the, what we've kinda learned is that we've stuck with those pumps, we're probably just gonna be stuck with those pumps.
Each, each pump place has their own certain pumps they use, and they don't, they don't work on each other's stuff, they keep it separate.
Because they can.
Makes sense.
So, what I, I guess what I would like approval for is to if we can't match the price of that other one, I guess I would like approval to go with the other pump.
Dollar price?
Uh.
Do you have a figure?
Uh.
Just the other bid, basically up to the dollar.
I don't think I have cranes.
Well, I just, I guess if you just approve an extra out to twenty-five hundred dollars for the other pump, that would cover the extra pump.
I'll make a motion to approve that twenty-five hundred dollars for the actual pump. If you.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And then you've got other.
Which one, the thirty-two?
Yeah.
For that Napa one, right? Yeah, there it is. Thirty-two, thirty-two fifty-six, this one?
Yeah.
That's for the Napa pump and the vein, a rock or something went through the pump and tore off the impeller beam.
Now, is that the same company that inspected?
This is the right one.
This is the right one.
No, we need a rule for that.
This is, this is the company that we use.
You shouldn't have said left hand, you can.
We just didn't have it.
No, we didn't have that, we didn't have that.
Didn't have that quote.
Oh, you talked about, you talked about.
Remember you said Napa and the vein was last.
Yeah, yeah. And that is rocks or whatever, could be concrete, could be anything.
How we can, can we keep that from happening in the future? A guard or filter in front of it, or?
By, by keeping up, we're cleaning ourselves.
Yeah, keep up cleaning sewers, and if there's, if there's concrete in them, especially where the pumps are, and that's all the way down there and then on the south. They just, them are things that have.
Well, how is, how do you know?
That just falls apart.
Crumbles.
Yeah, hydrants.
I was reading, people grow something.
Well, oh.
People throwing stuff in.
Just the sculler, not or anything else, just had a.
Anything, flooding, all the.
Does that include shipping?
Hmm, never know.
I can't remember on there. They'll, they would bring it.
I don't say anything, they'll bring it and said it won't be shipped here?
They would bring it.
Okay.
They're hard for it. It's about this big, this little.
Amazing that, that cost thirty-three hundred dollars.
Move to accept the quote from Minnesota Pump Works to do the necessary repairs at the Napa lift station.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
Yeah, that pump's been out since summer, so, yeah.
It's not from the rain that caused it possibly?
Anything, yeah. Can I have that back though? I got a bunch.
I suppose.
She's got notes on the back.
She's got notes.
I need the map on the back of it. Do you want a copy of that one tomorrow? Okay, so, so Minnesota pump on this one, and then I, and then on for the location.
We'll talk.
Talk tomorrow about it, all right, that's fine. And then there's one bill from uh John Schamansky, um municipal pool. They do our backflow preventives. There is a bill that he sent, but I don't do the billing for it, so I need you guys to check to see if this was ever paid.
Didn't we already do that?
Well, that's, I thought so too, but he's coming, I'm sure, in the next week to do.
Give it to Heather.
Yours and mine, yeah, just see.
See if we got it?
Yeah, just see if it, you can find it on there, because he couldn't find it.
Yeah.
But he should be here in the next week.
I remember us having this conversation a month or so.
Yeah, and I never found out, so.
Sure, don't you give that to somebody?
Otherwise, yeah, I don't have much else, um frozen clarifiers from last week. Done all that frozen, boiled a lot of their powder repaired, so it's good to go.
Move to accept the people's service report.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, really.
Eric.
Hi there. I've got ice rakes, uh, put more water in tonight, should be good for hopefully the year, might have to sprinkle a couple more times, but that's right now, we're good to go. Uh, uh, Christmas lights are out, uh, with the winter banners. Um, I got a couple that are, I'll look right now, I just gotta go hit the button up top, it's easy. Um, well, house two electric heater was out, so I had to link on, replaced it. Uh, well, house three, uh, we had problems in there too, what we found out, that was just some burnt wires. Why, I have no idea why they burnt, but Delane wasn't too concerned with them. Um, one, other nap, the only thing I really got is I need new truck, uh, tires on, still old. White Ford, and I got a price for it.
How many tires?
All four.
All four?
So, and I did do some research, and we haven't put tires on that since twelve.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
I guess it's a.
I think it's sniper new tires.
Got the money's or?
I'll make that motion, we get new tires for the truck.
So I second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
You have any questions?
You can be around tomorrow?
Absolutely.
Or later tonight, or do you wanna get out of here now?
No, I'm still here.
I wanna talk about it about tonight.
Yep, that's fine.
Thanks.
Tony, can we put something in the uh, go down with the water bills that let people know that the ice rake is, is ready for?
I sure can.
Can you?
Heather would love to.
Well, there might be some new people in Dallas, we don't even know we have one.
You know what, until they told me a couple weeks ago they did it, I had no idea that we had one.
Really?
I lived here my whole life.
Really?
Do we have it on Facebook?
Yeah, I'll be doing it there too.
Yeah, I'll put Facebook thing and I do water.
Perfect, thank you.
Probably won't be ready.
It's great to skate.
Wednesday or so, Thursday, I think it's cold here again.
How long do you guys usually keep that going then?
Till it gets.
Depends on the temperatures.
Till last year.
A lot of it.
Is there a, I can't, no one where it's at, but is there like a, a hut?
There's a water.
Heater's out in that one too, that's electric, and I have Delane on it, so. I don't know, and it could be something silly too. Yeah, we'll check on it, there's certainly a light on at the time, lights on, everything else is ready.
Yeah.
I'm sure I've driven by as many times.
So got the angles?
Yep, they're, yep, behind it, so, we good to go.
One of them.
Move to accept the maintenance report, costing two hundred five.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, Eric. All right, unfinished business, final water fund budget?
Yep, so we just need to do a final acceptance on all of those, the enterprise ones, there is no changes to any of them. I, the only one that I will say that there's gonna have to be a change next year is the storm sewer budget, but that's because I still won't know where we're sitting with the, the bill from the county.
Yeah.
So that's gonna just take a resolution to change that when we get to that one, so, um, we'll just need a motion to adopt each budget.
Okay.
And I, I would like each of those individually.
Individually.
Move to accept the final water fund budget.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
Move to accept the final sewer fund budget.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Hi.
I move to accept the final storm sewer budget.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right, new business, November twenty twenty-four check register, anybody have any questions on it? I know.
Questions?
After Christmas, yeah.
I'll go look through again. Oh, where's our name tags? They're on.
Just to kind of uh go back to what we were talking about earlier. Department of Human Services, ECPM payment center, that's what they were talking about, it's a wash, or we pay them and then they pay us.
Yep.
I just wanna make sure. What's MGV inspections?
That's our building inspector.
How many billings that expected for fifty-nine hundred dollars?
Usually what happens is you send us a bill after you've done a couple of months worth of stuff, you just close the stuff on.
So you don't know how many it was for?
No.
And we actually had, this is probably since I started and he finally billed us, so we had at least six months worth that he billed us for, so that's why it's larger.
Yeah, that's Mike Benford, that.
He does all our rental inspections.
Yeah, everything.
That's all. I move to accept the November twenty twenty-four check register.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
November twenty-four financials, anybody have questions on that?
And I will just mention, we did deposit our county money, so there was a deposit of three hundred thousand.
Friday.
Well, on Friday, so.
Yay.
It does show our revenues, not all there, but we're about eighty or ninety percent of revenue, so.
Okay.
Not showing, but it is there.
Okay.
LGAB at the end of the month, didn't it, was you around Christmas?
December, yeah, it'll be December.
It'll look great, actually.
Hmm? Uh, what came in now, it'll be another two hundred thousand. That'll be another two hundred and forty thousand to it, yeah, something like that.
I'll make a motion to accept the financials, second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Stackway renewal?
Um, I was thinking we're in a three-year contract, we're not, because I was reminded by the wonderful people that in order to lock into three-year contract, we have to pay money.
So did we just do a one-year?
Yeah.
Just to get signed?
Yeah, so it only actually went up to one hundred dollars, so the cost is uh four thousand and forty dollars, it was just, it was just like thirty-nine hundred dollars for last year, thirty, thirty-nine hundred dollars for last year, so. Um, and that is all our, that is all our scanning and document retention stuff, so all, every invoice that we get, everything that we pay, all the stuff that we do, that all goes through there, it's all searchable PDFs. So that's a software that we have to have. Um, I did talk to a few other places, um, I think next year we're gonna maybe look to see if we can find something different, just because we have.
This is a three-year?
No, this is one year. But we haven't been, haven't been super happy with DocuWare. Um, I did talk to Sarah Jo because we used to have Square Nine or Global Search, we moved to this from them. And so Sarah Jo, before she left, was using DocuWare, and then when she went to Danesville, they actually switched to Global Search, which is what we had before, and they went to their new product. And I actually talked to her a little bit, and she actually really likes that product, and so I think, because she's used both.
So when this is up.
We might, I think we might migrate that.
Does that mean we have to re-scan everything, or will they automatically?
No, it's usually part of the prod, usually part of the process, they'll take your files and migrate them to a new system, so.
Cause they're all digitized.
Yeah, yeah, and it's fairly easy to do that, so I'm not saying that's what's gonna happen for sure, but that's what we're looking into, because a lot, a lot of times they'll be able to offer more of a full contract, so, but I would like approval to, to do the one-year contract on that. And it isn't, it isn't a budget for next year.
I'll make a motion to accept the forty-three, thirty-eight, and fifteen.
It's only, it's only, it's only forty, forty, because we don't get taxed.
Oh, forty, forty for meth sales for the DocuWare cloud contract.
All in favor?
Hi.
Flood mitigation strategy discussion.
Um, so I just wanted to just talk real quick, the, everything went fairly well at the community discussion. Um, did talk with Joel Lewis a little bit, there's some stuff that needs to be done on the study to work with, I did talk to uh Commissioner Gustaferson again a little bit. Um, just wanted to verify, they did set thirty thousand dollars aside for us to utilize for the project. Um, they do believe that there is about twenty thousand dollars worth of work to do to um get this kind of buttered or buttoned up for that grant um process. I did talk to Joe Lewis, um, Joe said that they can actually write that grant for us, and they've been ballparking and they batting about eight, nine hundred for grant approval, um, so I did ask him today what that would cost. Uh, he said that for them to write that grant on our behalf would be about fifteen hundred dollars, and I did talk to Doug, and Doug thought that that money could easily come out of that thirty thousand. So, um, if you guys are okay with that, I would like approval to have Houston take care of that for us.
And that grant is gonna go to do?
That would be, that would be for, that would be for, for a grant for, for us to get the money to pay Houston to finish up the study.
And finish up the study was basically talking about things we wanted to do in that room the other night.
Yes. So basically, basically, we've tried to pay fifteen hundred for them to basically do it for free. You know, try and get that money for free, or as little cost as possible for us.
Do we have to have a decision of which routes we're going before we write it?
Not right now, not right now.
No, I know, that's why I'm asking.
No.
Or they're saving fees.
So, but if I, but I think the grant closes here in January, so I.
We do have time.
Yeah, but I need to tell them to start, so I need approval.
I'll make a motion to do exactly what you said. It's a lot of words.
Yeah.
It's a weird second, but yeah.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, administrators report?
Um, finished the budget, uh, finished up with Houston Engineering, went to the flood presentation, uh, continue work on the street project, I met with Elliot last, last week. Uh, worked on the flood grant opportunities, um, I confirmed that USDA has all of the grant documents that we need, they confirm that we should be getting distribution this month.
That's for the sirens?
Siren and the, and the SEBs, so we should have that money coming.
Good.
Good.
Um, began preliminary audit.
Yeah.
Player vision, Ryan's birthday, happy birthday, Ryan.
Check it out.
Um, Jerry with PD on the first, Mitch, anyone else on the sixth, Mallory, Cody, anniversaries, quite a few coming up, Mike Abbott on the twelfth. Laura Beckman on the twenty-seventh, and then Shelby, Ernesto, and Jeff in January.
I'll make a motion to accept the city administrator's report.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right, so I have some certificates of service to give out tonight to Brandy and to Ryan.
Thank you.
For your service.
Speech.
Should we just take a picture now or after the meeting?
It's up to you.
Nah, you might wanna do it now, we have a closed session.
Yeah, we have a closed session. You wanna lift them over here? Hold Sanders here.
Let's just do it.
You're over here, okay.
Those are the best pictures.
Yeah.
Smile. She's busy.
Thank you both for.
Yeah.
It's been short, come on.
Learning, learning the other side of everything, and, yeah, all right. All right, so we're gonna make a motion to close, for a close. gonna make a motion to close, for a closed meeting at this time?
Yeah, you can, oh yeah, that's fine. You can disclose the meeting at this time.
Okay.
You may need to read the.
Oh, so before we adjourn, our next regular city council meeting will be held on Monday, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five at six thirty P M. Um, so now.
We disclose meeting.
I'm sorry.
Say it at this time.
Yep, at this time, we're gonna close the meeting for tonight.
Yes, to discuss the city's.
Oh, sorry, the meeting, the, um, at this time pursuant in Minnesota statute section thirteen B dot zero three to discuss the city's labor negotiation strategy related to the city's negotiations with the L E L S, local number four oh seven, police officers union. Sorry.
Very good.
First time you had to do it.
I know, okay.
Go ahead.
Alright.